Hello, I'm Lorraine Miller and I'm a volunteer with the Hamilton-Wenham League of Women Voters. The league is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government. This league has hosted a candidate's night for more than 60 years. Our goal is to provide an opportunity for candidates to introduce themselves so that voters will be more informed. The questions asked this evening were solicited from our membership and town residents. We'll be hearing from the candidates for the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee Board Race. There are three seats open and there are five candidates running. Now I would like to introduce our moderator, Amy Smith. Amy is on the board of the League of Women Voters of the North Shore. She lives in Georgetown where she serves on the Town Historic Commission and Open Space Committee. This is the third year that Amy has generously volunteered her services as our moderator and we are grateful for her help.
Good evening. Tonight we'll be introducing you to the five candidates for school committee. The four roles are as follows. You will each have three minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for your closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. Taking the entire allotted time for each response is optimal, but extending beyond that is not. The candidates received the first two questions in advance. A timer will sound at the end of each answer period. It will start in alphabetical order and then rotate who answers each question first. At this time, I'd like to invite the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee Board Race candidates to make their opening statements. And we will start with Ms. Ashwood.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Legal Women Voters for hosting candidate night and giving us all the opportunity to meet together and discuss our platforms. My name is Courtney Ashwood. I live in Wenham, a resident of Wenham, have two children. I grew up in Wenham. My parents moved to the town back in the seventies. And I'm a graduate of the regional high school back in 1994. Yes, I'm old, but I love the communities. I've been here a long time, majority of my life, really. I have one child at the high school, another who's attending the prep middle school. They both went to Bessie Buker, so we've been actively involved, really, in the district now for, since 2016, trying to attend meetings, trying to stay informed, like what's happening in our schools, what's happening in the towns, asking questions, staying engaged. So basically decided to run, I would say, because I don't feel like there's enough community representation overall currently happening across all the boards in both towns. And I don't know that taxpayers are truly being given a voice in some of the very heated hot-button issues and items that have been really in the town now for the past five years. So that's really why I decided to run.
Hi, thank you. Next, Mr. Austin.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jeff Austin. I moved to Hamilton in 2010 and I'm running because I believe it's time for a fresh perspective. One rooted in fiscal responsibility, a strong commitment to academic excellence, and a renewed focus on genuine community engagement. Over the years, many residents, myself included, have felt increasingly disconnected from the decision-making process. Public input often feels like a one-way street, limited to brief comments without meaningful dialogue or follow-up. I will strongly advocate for an open, transparent, and responsive committee that actively listens, collaborates, and respects the voices of the families, educators, and taxpayers it serves. On fiscal responsibility, I'm committed to ensuring that the budget is prioritized for initiatives that have a direct benefit to our students' academic achievement and mental enrichment. We must approach financial decisions with a long-term vision, strategic planning, accountability, and especially when it comes to the maintenance of our school buildings and how capital projects are pursued. Regarding academic excellence, our young students deserve learning environments tailored for their development, environments supported by decades of research showing smaller, community-based schools foster better academic outcomes and stronger mental health supported for elementary-age children. Lastly, I believe new leadership on the school committee is necessary because the status quo has not adequately reflected the community's preference or priorities. Whether it's a push for a large consolidated elementary school, despite clear public polling favoring renovations of our neighborhood schools, or financial choices that have overlooked the importance of responsible, long-term maintenance, it's evident that a recalibration is needed. I'm here to offer a new constructive approach, one that prioritizes the well-being of students, honors the voices of our residents, and ensures responsible stewardship of our financial and educational resources. Thank you, and I look forward to earning your trust and support.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Frankel. And you're muted.
Little people can't live through it. Oops, it isn't. Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for making this opportunity to speak to you all. I'm running for reelection to make sure the school committee addresses several issues that I feel were inadequately addressed during my first term. An overarching issue is the absence of stronger supervision of the superintendent and holding him accountable for his performance. One of his issues was spending too much time, I felt, 70% by his own estimate, on future building projects and failing to spend enough time on improving the facilities and academic performance of current students. That has been most apparent at Cutler, where the academic performance has declined over the past five years in contrast to the other two elementary schools. Failing to create a more complete list of projects for all five schools, costing them and seeking consensus for their prioritization and funding, that's something that's urgently needed. The school district master plan of 2014 actually did an excellent job of addressing the needs of all the schools. I think we need to take a second look at that and update it. The school building committee is still a grave concern from a governance point of view, needs to be rebuilt in terms of the composition and voting powers to ensure we have the community taxpayer more fully represented. The current majority votes on the school building committee are held by school employees, only one of whom lives in our towns and pays our local taxes. Of course, we want their advice, but we should have committee voting members who are accountable to town voters, that is elected officials, select board, board of health representatives, and of course, the school committee. I want to see the implementation of the move to electric buses to save us from non-competitive bus contracts. I want to see better governance and oversight of water and air quality in all five schools. That starts with regular measurement. For air quality, that needs to be continuous monitoring, just like Boston Public Schools and many other school districts. Then putting in place programs that use those measurements to make better decisions. Believe it or not, that can make a significant difference to academic performance and absenteeism. Harvard studies prove that to be true. I've helped to sponsor votes to use free independent expert services paid for by National Grid to evaluate all five schools for energy optimization savings. There are all kinds of rebates and tax breaks for taking the next step in achieving those savings, things that do not have to wait on MSBA. Finally, I want to do what it takes to avoid future school shutdowns from any serious outbreaks of diseases, and some are looming threats, avian flu being one we already know about. Thank you for your time and thanks again to the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ms. Cunberger.
Thank you so much. Thank you again also for hosting. This is such a great opportunity for recording and sending out to the townspeople. I'm Amy Cunberger. I've lived in Hamilton since 2017. I have two children at the Winthrop School, one heading to the middle school in the fall. I've been working as a graphic designer professionally since 2005, mostly working in nonprofit marketing, publication design, and I've also done a lot of branding for small businesses here on the North Shore. I earned my MFA later in life and have been teaching at the college level since 2020. And since 2023, I've been a full-time professor of graphic design at Salem State University. My husband and I moved our family here from Melrose. He's a small business owner. Both of us received Massachusetts Public Education right through higher ed. One of my core beliefs is that public schools are for everyone, for learning academics, for growing community, a place for kids to grow up confident and ready for what's next. The first time I ran in 2022, I had been volunteering at the Winthrop Cafeteria. I was asked by some people in the community if I would be interested in running for school committee. Since I have this interest in public education, I went for it. I've been a member of the committee since then. It's been an amazing experience. I've met a lot of people and I have really enjoyed my first term. This time around, I've decided to run for a few reasons. One, because I've already invested a lot of time in learning about public education in Massachusetts. I've staying current with publications and trainings from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, learning about policy and learning about our district. Another is that given the current uncertainty of the U.S. Department of Education, I want to be in a position where I can help our district continue to serve our community with the values we currently uphold, including learning, belonging, inclusivity. Those things are really important to me. I am currently the chair of the Policy Subcommittee and I am the vice chair of the full school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but least, Mr. Pledo.
Thanks for this opportunity, Amy, and the League of Women Voters. Excuse me, it's always nice to actually have a chance to sort of answer some questions from the public and actually talk about why I'm running. My name is David Pledo. I'm actually running, this will be my fourth election that I'm entering in. I've been a member of the Hamilton-Wenham School Committee since 2016. You know, nine years ago, I actually came in shortly after I moved back to town. I also am a Hamilton-Wenham graduate. I originally moved to Wenham in 1986, so I've been, you know, part of the community for the past 40 years. But when I moved back to town and, excuse me, my my son entered kindergarten, I saw that there was an opening for a school committee member and decided to, you know, put my name in the ring. Excuse me, at the time, one of the things I was really concentrating on was this idea of upgrading our facilities here throughout the district, and that's something that I think that I've been pretty successful in doing so far in my time here. And the reason I decided to run again is I really just want to see the end of this elementary school project through, you know, Dante, my son that was entering kindergarten is a sophomore at this time, and it'd be actually a lot of fun to actually see him through his entire career here in Hamilton-Wenham. I actually have another son and a daughter also in the middle school, in the high school respectively. So I have a lot of ties here within the community, whether it be through the school committee or, you know, I'm a youth football coach, softball, baseball, sort of done it all, and I'm around town. I really enjoy volunteering my time with the community. And, you know, since I have the masters, my masters in education is in Curriculum and Instruction, and I also have an EDS in Education Administration that I, you know, feel that I could put my, you know, my schooling to work here. You know, I'm currently a high school teacher. I've taught at the college, middle school, and high school level. So I really understand the ins and outs of what it takes to be inside the classroom while I'm trying to do my best to sort of oversee the direction of the department, I'm sorry, the district as a whole. So, you know, just looking for the opportunity to kind of finish what I started and, you know, really looking forward to serving the community for another three years.
Thank you. Our first question, and Mr. Austin, you will answer first. Will the recently enacted changes at the Department of Education affect the Hamilton-Wenham school system?
Thank you, Amy. Even though the federal government is moving some control of education back to the states, important protections like special education services, anti-discrimination laws, and student civil rights are still fully in place. These laws don't disappear. They're backed by federal courts and other agencies. So students in Hamilton-Wenham will continue to get the services and protections they've always had. These changes mainly mean that the state of Massachusetts will now have greater influence over how education dollars are spent and how programs are run, potentially shaping local education policies in perpetuity. And Massachusetts has already had some of the best public schools in the country because the state has always taken education seriously. Independent of federal rules, our district, independent of federal rules, our district has been doing well because of strong state policies and local leadership, not because of Washington mandates. Also, federal funding isn't being cut off. The goal is to cut out the unnecessary bureaucracy, the paperwork and the red tape, and allow more decisions and dollars to stay closer to home, where communities like Hamilton-Wenham can decide how best to support students. So to sum it up, our schools are still protected. Funding is still there, and it actually gives us more local control. I'm confident Hamilton-Wenham is in a strong position to continue offering excellent education with fewer federal strings attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Frankel. Would you like me to repeat the question? And you're on mute.
I think this is, I'm a little uncertain about what the impact will be because there's been a lot of inconsistency in the administration's statements. But one that bothers me that is certainly impacting the tertiary education is the government seems to be going through and looking for every D, everything that's got DEI in it or even hints of DEI in it. And we certainly have a lot of DEI messaging in our school system. I'm just hoping they don't actually start to target us and other schools for that reason. Also, ESA funds are federal funds that are flowed through to the state for emergency purposes. I don't know what's happening with that. So I'm personally taking a wait-and-see attitude until things settle down because the new head of the department is only just being moved into place. And I hope Jeff's optimism with this is well-founded. I certainly like the idea of the state having fewer strings and being allowed to call their own shots and not being stuck with federal mandates. But I guess my bottom line is wait and see.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Cunberger.
Thank you. So as others have mentioned, this is kind of a hard question to answer because there's a lot up in the air right now. Not to be the negative one, but I don't have as much faith that our federal government will continue to provide what they have been providing, not just financially. But I will just briefly touch on like the Department of Ed's role is to hold schools accountable for providing appropriate education for all students. This includes federal student aid, like loans, Pell Grants, work-study, protecting civil rights by enforcing like nondiscrimination laws, including Title VI and Title IX, and running the Office of Special Ed and Rehab rehabilitative services. They also are committed to sharing knowledge about education. We focus a lot on the budget when we talk about the Department of Ed, but there's more that they do. One kind of small example, we're already seeing something happen in our district is a program was cut, it's called the Northeast Food for Schools Program. It was a $12 million grant for the whole state. We received a really small amount of that, but the grant itself is kind of interesting. It provides money to schools to buy local agriculture, so buy local food. And I just, I think those kinds of programs are the small ones that people don't know a lot about that could, it's a good example of something that could easily like fall by the wayside, and I'm worried about bigger programs as well. So in our state, I feel like we have a lot of support in these areas from our governor, from our attorney general, and from our district's school leadership. Same in our towns. I feel like the people who live in town, you know, are willing to advocate to continue to provide the free and appropriate education for all our students. I want to stay on the school committee to protect and ensure that in case that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pledo.
Great. Thanks again, Amy. Excuse me, you know, will the changes, the potential changes in the Department of Education affect Hamilton-Wenham? The short answer is yes, right? And while Hamilton-Wenham may not rely heavily on federal funding as some other districts, the impact would still be felt here. You know, most importantly, I just want to say that I'm vehemently opposed to dismantling or any defunding of the U.S. Department of Education. Right? By doing so, it'd cause significant harm to our nation's most vulnerable learners, students who depend on Title I funding, idea support, and other federal protections and resources that ensure equal access to education. Now locally, Hamilton-Wenham receives about $800,000 annually in federal funds. This funding supports key positions in our school, including about 10 education support professionals, ESPs, through the Special Education Idea Grant, and two more through Title I. While we're in a stronger position than most districts that rely on federal dollars, that, you know, rely on federal dollars at a much larger share of their budgets, the loss of these funds would still create a gap that would directly impact student support services here in our district. The bigger issue, though, is national, the erosion of the Department of Education, threats to core principles of equity, access, and accountability in public education. And that's just not bad policy. It's a step backwards.
Thank you. And lastly, Ms. Ashwood.
Thank you. So I think I fall into the camp of it's just kind of a little too early to be making very firm statements on how this would impact our towns. The wording in the executive order that was put out specifically states Pell Grants, Title I funding, programs for students with disabilities will all be preserved in full and redistributed to various other agencies and the departments. So what does that really mean? I mean, I'm a human resources professional. We do federal reporting too. Sometimes those requirements change. Sometimes it's disruptive. Sometimes it's an administrative burden that gets added into your plate that you didn't have before. Sometimes it's an administrative relief. You know, a layer of bureaucracy that wasn't really a value add is now off your plate and lets you tackle more strategic things. So I think it's too soon to make definitive determinations. I think we live in a state, you know, with the number one, public education. I think we have a community that strongly supports public education. I think we're in a strong position to continue funding our schools at level services. And I think per the executive order, those Pell Grants, Title I funding, students with disabilities would still be funded and administered by the federal government going forward, just by different branches of the federal government. So that's kind of where I stand on that issue at this time.
Thank you. Okay, our second question, and Mr. Frankel, we'll start with you. Please provide your views with respect to the proposed school consolidation project. And you're muted.
You'd think I'd remember that. Yeah, my problem with the current proposed consolidation project is that it's so enormous in cost that it will beggar the other three schools. And I don't think that's equitable, and I think there's a lot that could be done across the board, across all five schools, for which there's actual evidence that it would improve outcomes, academic outcomes and health outcomes. And so I feel that the school district committing to so much to this consolidated school has in fact turned out to be incredibly divisive across the town because there's a lot of feeling, which I share, that there's much more we can do for the current schools. And if you go back to the 2014 strategic plan, it did in fact have a much more balanced view of improvements to all the schools and various option scenarios in that. I think we need to go back and redo this. And I know that's painful and I know a lot of work has gone into it, but I think it came out with a very lopsided recommendation, one that it had from the get-go, which was a preference for the consolidated school rather than a genuine look at many other scenarios.
Thank you. Ms. Cunberger. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, that's okay. Thank you. So my views on the proposed school consolidation project. This is the kind of decision, as a public decision-maker, that keeps you up at night. There's so many, there were so many great areas to this project. It is very complex. But overall, the new school building is an amazing opportunity to take advantage of funds from the state. The process up to this point has been so thorough and to me, very impressive. I'm really grateful for the work that the school building committee has done to get to this point. The school district was invited into the program just before I began my time on the school committee in 2022. So this has been something that has spanned my tenure on the committee. There are many positive points to the project, which I have spoken about in open meeting. But the highlights are that our educators will be able to carry out their work in safe, clean, modern, and appropriate spaces. The building will be much more efficient to operate both environmentally and economically, and the transition plan will create less disruption for children than a renovation would. There's no need to temporarily move students anywhere or lease modular classrooms. If we don't use the money that's coming our way from the state, we will need to move very quickly with town money on capital planning projects to address the issues that we've outlined in our State of Facilities Report, which you can find on the district website. Things like lacking security, ADA non-compliance, poor electrical service, poor HVAC, and the educational plan, things like space issues. We are out of space in our elementary school buildings, appropriate facilities for students. I'm concerned if we let these issues linger for too long, we'll start to lose teachers and families to other schools.
Thank you. Mr. Pledo.
Great, thank you. I just want to go on record as saying that I fully support the proposed school consolidation project. As someone who's served on the school committee since the first statement of interest was submitted to the MSBA back in 2016, and as a member of the school building committee since its inception, I've been deeply involved in this entire process from the very beginning. The proposal's not a quick fix. It's a result of years of careful study, research, and input from architects, administration, educators, town boards, the MSBA, and other consultants. Together, we've done a deep dive into what would be the most effective and fiscally responsible way to enhance our elementary schools and serve our students well into the future. While some may suggest alternative models, it's important to understand that Hamilton-Wenham doesn't have the facilities or infrastructure to manage a multi-phase renovation of existing schools without major disruptions. We'd need to rent trailers, relocate entire classrooms, navigate the logistics and financial burden of shuffling students, staff, and, you know, administration around for several years, because you'd have to do this multiple times. And while trying to deliver, all while trying to deliver high-quality education in temporary spaces. The proposed consolidation school offers a long-term solution with a purposely-built state-of-the-art facility that gives our outstanding teachers the environment they deserve and our students the foundations they need to thrive. This is the right step forward for Hamilton-Wenham.
Thank you. Ms. Ashwood.
So I am not in favor of the consolidated solution for our elementary schools. And I think I've been pretty public about my opinion on that, so I don't think that's any surprise to anybody on this Zoom call. The majority of my reasons really stem from all of the studies that point to our current setup being the best setup for kids in the age group of kindergarten through fifth grade. And the 2014 Master Plan document clearly outlined that our buildings could be renovated with reimbursement from the MSBA and continue to serve our communities for a very long time. That document outlines specifically the renovations that could be addressed. I understand, and I know, because this talking point keeps coming up, that the current footprint of these buildings does not meet the ed plan that was designed as part of this project. But $142 million is a huge ask, and it only solves really one building problem. We still have a high school that is in desperate need of updates. And if we hamstring our resources to this one project, I'm fearful we won't be able to make the necessary improvements to our high school where we are losing students left and right. Those numbers are way down. So I'm not in favor of it. I would rather have seen us look into renovating our current buildings with the existing footprint and getting reimbursement from the state.
Thank you. And Mr. Austin.
Thank you. No, I believe the proposed consolidation project is not the best long-term interest of our students, taxpayers, or the character of our community. Studies by the National Education Policy Center and other respected sources consist consistently show that smaller elementary schools, ideally with student populations of three to 500 students, provide better academic outcomes, stronger social emotional support and closer ties between families and schools. While proponents of consolidation argue financial efficiency, the data tells a much more complete story. Studies reveal that the difference in long-term maintenance costs between small, well-maintained schools and large consolidation buildings is negligible. Additionally, the process leading to the current proposal has raised concerns. The community's input, shown through two separate polls, opposed a consolidated elementary school. However, the district moved forward with a consolidated focused plan submitted to the state without serious consideration of renovation plans, which other nearby towns have successfully pursued with significant MSBA reimbursement. I believe our school system deserves leadership that truly listens to the community, thoroughly evaluates all the options and prioritizes decisions based on both sound fiscal responsibility and what's best for the well-being and success of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our third question, we'll start with Ms. Kumberger. Please address the claims recently made in the flyer that was sent to residents in both towns by Save Small HW Schools.
Okay. The two flyers, I received both flyers in the mail. There's information on them that is misleading and not accurate. I think that Mr. Tracy, the superintendent, did a good job addressing the first flyer that went out. I have concerns about the source of the information. I know the first flyer came out without any identifying information. I think it's really it's really hard to look at something like that and understand, you know, if someone's not willing to come forward and claim that they are making these statements and knowing what I know, having been part of this process for so long and knowing that the information is not an equal comparison to the project we're talking about, it was really disappointing to find it in the mail, honestly. The second mailer that went out at least had ties to existing websites, but again, no mention of who's behind the information. So for me, I you know, I think I've made it clear. I've talked in meetings about this project. I've been involved with this project for so long. I know all the background. The building that is used as an example in those flyers, it's not an equitable project to the project we're talking about here. It's my understanding. I looked into it quickly. It was a small renovation project that only added a couple hundred square feet. This is a really big, big change that we're looking to make. Just, you know, amount of students alone is the issue and it just isn't an apples-to-apples comparison. I'm I feel badly that it's come to this point where people are needing to send out information that isn't accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pleda.
Excuse me. Thank you. You know, I'm you know, I'm sort of stuck to say, I'm sorry that those flyers actually came out. Right? I understand where a lot of people are nervous about this project, right? The scope, the size isn't right for our town. You know, and the tradition of having the three school system, elementary school system here in town. So I understand where that's coming from. I also understand that, you know, $142 million for the project is a large sum and in, you know, in some ways, I'm sort of taxing myself out of, out of town. But, you know, as I said, I've been through this process from day one. I've looked at every single option as part of the initial team when going into the SOI. I was there when the MSBA actually suggested to our district that we try and combine the two, the Cutler and with the project. So we'd actually get invited into the, had standard better chance of getting invited into the project. You know, and then done doing the deep dives to see what's actually the best, what makes the best sense fiscally. You know, that we can get both communities behind. You know, if we were to actually go and and just renovate all three buildings, that would take a substantial amount of time. Two of our elementary schools are in Hamilton and they're the two that are in the more dire need. So we're expecting the taxpayers, the taxpayers of one of them to support two projects over an extended period of time that actually don't, that wouldn't really affect their students. And then maybe 10 years down the road would be their turn for a third. All the while, as Courtney said, you know, our high school still is going to need attention down the road. You know, I think that it's a lot of incorrect information. And as you know, Amy really put it, it's not apples to apples.
Thank you. Ms. Ashwood.
So, well, when I say this, I don't want any disrespect to the current board members who are in the Zoom meeting. But I do think, you know, labeling the flyers misinformation, disinformation speaks to some of the disconnect I think we have between our boards and taxpayers. People are frustrated. They're trying to express that this consolidated plan wasn't what the majority of the community wanted. And no matter how many times anybody tries to bring that up, they're getting really kind of stonewalled, like, no, this is the best direction. This is the best direction. And I think that disconnect is only going to continue to grow. We got to figure out a way. We're a very small community. We don't have a large commercial base. We're probably never going to have a large commercial base. It is what it is. And we have been able to offer an amazing education through our public schools and we want to continue to be able to do that. So some people really feel the current setup is the better way and that we could have renovated. Yeah, there would have been some concessions on the ed plan, but we could have renovated at a much lower cost in a phased approach. And my kids went to Bunker. I would not have been offended if Winthrop and Cutler got updated while my kids attended Bunker. They had a wonderful experience at Bunker. They loved it. The windows are huge. It's bright. The teachers are excellent. It was awesome. I would have fully supported renovating those other two schools with my two over at Bunker. So to, you know, I find it interesting. I think that we haven't been fully led to believe that you can get those type of renovations. And that was down to the guts. That was down to the cinder blocks renovated, updated with square footage added. So it is interesting to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Austin.
Sure. Thank you very much. So I had the flyer right in front of me, actually. So I'd like to, you know, there's very few points on here. You know, I hear that Mr. Pledo and Kumberger said that there's a lot of misinformation here. There's not. There's a few direct points that are factual. I mean, it says at the top, it's $142 million that we're looking to build this huge school that's 745 student school. That's a fact. That's not, that's not any misinformation. The second one says, small schools make the best schools. Some people can argue if they disagree with that. There's studies over decades that prove it's best for what's for young children just starting out in the academic career. The third point is, that's why we moved here. I mean, you think about the people that moved to this town and I'm generalizing, but when you, for instance, myself, I came from Marblehead. We looked at all towns all around the North Shore. Some saturated like Beverly or Salem and some or Peabody and some not Georgetown, Groveland, Hamilton. We chose this because it's a small community. We chose this for the small schools. So that, I think that's a pretty, pretty fair general statement there. And then the other point here, a poll, the poll was conducted. The results were, were pretty accurate, or I should say, pretty clear. Fifty-two point seven, I think it was, were opposed, 40% strongly opposed to a consolidated school. That's not misinformation. That's a fact. The next one was, what about Bessie Bunker High School? I mean, Bessie Bunker School, elementary school. It's saying that, you know, it has consistently higher academic metrics than all three students, all three schools. That's a fact, right? You guys, you guys probably know this if you're in the school committee. And so when, when this, if this was to go through the consolidated school, that's going to be limited down to pre-K and K. So what, what are we doing to that? These are not, this is not misinformation. It's collected a bunch of facts that, that people are frustrated, as others have said, in trying to get out to the community because they're not stayed in the, in the school committee or by the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frankel.
Yeah, I was going to do the same thing as Jeff did. I don't see where the misinformation is here. You can't really argue when people say that's why we moved here. That's, that's their, that's their reasoning for filling the way they do. Small schools make the best schools. There's plenty of research to support that point of view. And so I don't want to repeat what Jeff has said, but I, I look at that, that flyer and I don't think I can can aggressively disagree with it. I also think that it's really not true that you have to wait a very long time for the kind of improvements that I'm particularly focused on, which is to improve the HVAC systems, basically ventilation across all five schools. That can all be done pretty much at the same time. It doesn't require relocating people. And it's probably the only thing that we could do that actually there's real evidence that would make a significant difference to academic outcomes. And, and give you the equivalent of shrinking class sizes by a third, based on some research. So I, I I, I don't think this was deceptive. I think it was a genuine statement of, of the reasons why they're strongly opposed. You know, it's not a matter of right or wrong. They, they feel that way. They've they've provided the facts that I can't really disagree with. And, and my own view I would already express. And it does appear, and I was part of getting a, a polling company to do the polling at the time. It does appear that the community were, were strongly against doing this. And, and we, we serve at the pleasure of the community. We, we need to represent our voters. We can't entirely govern everything by our own opinions without taking that into account.
Thank you. And now we'll go to closing statements and we'll start with Mr. Pleda. And you're muted.
I'm sorry. You know, thanks for the opportunity to actually, you know, speak tonight and get together and actually give a chance to, to understand and let the voters know where I'm coming from. You know, I'm pretty, you know, a pretty wide open book when it comes to all of this. Like I said, I've been actively involved in this, you know, committee and in this community for the past, you know, 10 plus years and, you know, nine of which on the school committee. You know, hopefully I get an opportunity to spend the next three years actually, you know, serving the community for a little bit longer. You know, I, you know, I have to go back to say, I understand that this is a, you know, the the monumental sort of issue in front of us of this new school and in the direction we should be going is is, is, you know, quite divisive and you know, in, in, and, you know, I've had a wonderful opportunity actually being able to be part of this, this entire process. And, and I really think that we've done a great job in presenting the best plan for Hamilton moving forward. You know, and I really is wanting to try and actually see that through. So hopefully that, you know, on April 10th, that you'll vote for me and April 5th, you know, we get through the town meetings and have the ability to actually build this new school. You know, I think it'd be, it'd be fantastic for our community, you know, moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ashwood.
So thank you again to our hosts this evening and to everybody who joined this discussion. I guess I'll say in my closing statements, you know, I, I hope you would vote for me next month in the election. And regardless of what happens with the consolidation vote at town meeting, if it makes it to ballot, if it doesn't, if it passes on ballot, if the project passes, I would completely throw my support behind it and work to diligently make it so it's a success for the district because ultimately I think that's what we all should want for the district to remain successful. If it doesn't, which, you know, I would probably even be in that camp. Then I would throw my weight behind, how do we tackle our facility updates in a manner where we improve the buildings for all of our students in the district? And we, you know, pay attention to having the highest tax rate on the North Shore already. People on fixed income, people with tight budgets after a very inflationary period where things, the costs of things have spiraled. Everybody's budget is tight. The average taxpayer is looking at $30,000 over 20 years to pay for this new school. So if that doesn't pass, then I would work really hard with the rest of the committee members to get these facilities updated, get our teachers paid and keep our taxes, you know, from going into a place where we will be taxing ourselves out of town because I think I'm with David. If some of this stuff passes, I'll probably tax myself right out too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Austin.
Yes, thank you very much. First, I believe that every policy, every budget line, every program should be prioritized with academic achievement and well-being of our children. Decades of research have shown that smaller schools support better academic and social outcomes. Second, we must be fiscally responsible with the resources given to us by taxpayers. I will continue to advocate for a realistic sequence renovation plan for our existing neighborhood elementary schools, ensuring we take full advantage of available state reimbursement programs. Just as importantly, no matter which plan is accepted by the community, I'll push for a transparent maintenance plan that ensures all school buildings are properly cared for and perpetuity. Finally, I firmly believe our community deserves a stronger voice. I will advocate to revise the district's public engagement policy during school committee business meetings to encourage more meaningful community input. I'm not here to preserve the status quo. I'm here to offer a thoughtful, balanced and responsive approach that prioritizes students, respects taxpayers and truly listens to our residents. I hope to earn your trust and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frankel.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you for listening and caring about our schools. This is a great time to engage and guide us as your representatives. Feel free to contact me directly and with your point of view. I'm a voter, a taxpayer, and I've expressed my views both as your representative and fellow town homeowner. I'm also a grandparent of a middle school student, so I'm invested personally in ensuring that our schools offer the best possible learning experience. Those who have come to know me know that I fight for my beliefs when I come, when it comes especially to health and safety. It also is true when fighting to get the best teachers. I was lucky to attend top public schools in Melbourne, Australia, so I know what advantages that can bring in developing your career. By the way, both of those schools buildings are over 100 years old and yet are top performers in the country. Thank you for your time and I hope to earn your support and your vote. I can be reached at six one seven, seven eight zero seven one seven seven or my school committee email. Thank you. Thanks again.
All right. Thank you. And last but least, Ms. Kumberger.
Thank you and thank you again for hosting. So I just want to make one last note on the school building project. It is a big ask. I feel it's appropriate figure for what we'll be getting. As a taxpayer, I prefer knowing what the cost will be over time upfront rather than be constantly surprised by large capital projects that are the result of putting Band-Aids on buildings that are past their useful life. As an educator, I recognize how important the facilities are to doing your job and our teachers and our students deserve appropriate facilities. But school committee is more than just this issue. I want to ensure everyone knows my main purpose for being on the school committee. Public education is so important to me. I attended public schools for most of my education with a short stint in private school. And I recognized early on, public education is an institution that stands for equity, focused on preparing young people for whoever is next, college, civic engagement, career. I hope that the changes in our federal government don't affect these issues. But all of these things are important to me as both a school committee member and also as a faculty member at a state university. So I promise I am paying attention. One of my favorite parts of being on school committee is also how often the district celebrates its students. We're often visited by athletes, artists, the DECA team from the high school. It's so amazing to see these students come into our meetings and tell us about their accomplishments. School is an important community and the place where young people learn how the world works. An educated population benefits everyone. Please feel free to email me. You can email my personal email, amy.kumberger@gmail.com with any questions and don't forget to vote at town meeting and at the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over back to the Hamilton Wenham League.
Lauren.
You're muted, Lauren.
Am I good? Okay. So the league thanks the candidates for participating this evening and a special thanks to our moderator, Amy Smith. We recognize that our time here was short and we encourage voters who have follow-up questions to contact the candidates directly. Please consider joining the league and working with other local volunteers so that we can provide this type of voter education in the future. Visit us at L W V H W org to learn more about league membership. Remember to attend the annual town meetings on April 5th. It starts at 9:00 AM in Hamilton at the Hamilton Wenham Regional High School and at 1:00 PM in Wenham at the Bunker Elementary School. Remember to vote in the local elections, which will be held on April 10th. Thank you for watching.